Good evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, July 12th, 2018, 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. We always start our meetings with a pledge to the flag. So, Councilmember Bailey, would you lead us in the pledge?
I will. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bailey. And for the record this evening, we have six council members present. And Councilmember Huffaker is with us on the phone this evening. Our first item on tonight's agenda would be the consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meeting, and a motion to cancel the meeting on Thursday, July 26th.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items consisting of this evening's agenda, the vouchers, minutes from previous meetings. And this includes the formal notice of cancellation of the Thursday, July 26th, 2018 city council meeting.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt the evening's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings, and the formal cancellation of the July 26th regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Got to get my timing right with Keith. There's always a slight delay. The next item on our agenda this evening is citizen comment. I will say this, if you're here to talk about the public hearing, either the public hearing items, we will accept public testimony during that time, which will be the first item on our agenda after presentations. If you're here to discuss the Pine Shadow subdivision, we will accept public testimony during that time as well. So if you're here for any other sort of reason, or would like to address the council on snowplowing or potholes or something, this would be your time. We'd give you three minutes and ask that you give us your name for the record. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Anywhere, like right in the studio?
Well, sit down so the microphones can get you. And the TV cameras can get you, because you need to sit down.
My name is Jean Poyer, and I'm here with my group, 350 Wenatchee. And we're encouraged to know that Wenatchee is pursuing a resolution for clean energy, and we're also wondering when it will be adopted. We're a local chapter of 350.org, an international environmental organization encouraging citizens to action, believing that 350 parts per million of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere is a safe upper limit to avoid the climate tipping point. Now, that deserves just a few seconds of explanation. In the years 1750 to 1850, there was no change. It was level at 280 parts per million ppm. Now, in the mid 50s, 1950s, that next hundred years, we increased 40 parts per million, and in the mid 50s hit 310. It was in about 1988 that it increased another 40 parts per million in just 30 years, and we hit that safe upper limit of 350 ppm. In 2015 and 16, we've increased another 50 parts per million in less than 30 years, and we started hitting over 400. On June of 2018, we increased another 10 parts per million in only two and a half to three years, and we have recorded now four 10.79 parts per million, and levels continue to rise. On September 8th, thousands of rallies in cities and towns around the world are being planned to demand our local leaders commit to building a fossil-free world that puts people and justice before profits. And when it comes to real climate leadership, mayors, governors, councils, and city bosses have as much opportunity as national governments and more direct influence. We've seen a draft copy of the resolution, and we believe it's an excellent move for our community to make. We encourage Wenatchee to provide this leadership so other local communities will adopt their own resolution. We would be proud to celebrate the passage of your clean energy policy for the city of Wenatchee by September 8th. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. And I did get that on my desk this week.
Okay.
So we will take a look at it and get back to you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jean. Anybody else wish to address the council on any item that is not the public hearing for the districting or the Pine Shadow? Yes? Come on up.
But I need an interpreter. Please, could anyone interpret me? Yes, yes. My name is Teresa Sepeda, and I'm here because on June 26th, there was a car accident on Stevens and Rosewood.
On June 26th, she had a car accident on Stevens and Rosewood.
And my daughter was driving, and on Rosewood, there was no stop sign.
Her daughter was driving, and because there was not a stop sign on Rosewood, her daughter just kept driving.
So on Stevens, there was a car that came and hit them.
So that car didn't stop and hit them.
Even though there's a stop sign and there's three giant orange signs. I live near there. And the next day, I have to pass through there, and the same happened with other cars. That just don't stop. I came today to request if there can be a stop sign put in Rosewood. If it's possible, I would please plead you to put a stop sign, or if you have any other solutions that might be better, that is acceptable, too. Thank you.
Okay. So we will get our city engineer and our police chief to look at that intersection, and if there's something we can do, we'll do it. And I heard about the accident, and I'm, yeah, from your son, so I knew about it.
And the director will talk about it. Muchas gracias.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. Seeing no other takers, we have one presentation tonight regarding National Night Out proclamation. So Councilmember Harold, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, I will. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police, community partnerships, and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. Whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Whereas National Night Out provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. Whereas millions of neighbors take part in National Night Out across thousands of communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide on the first Tuesday in August. Whereas neighborhoods across the nation host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, and various other community events with safety demonstrations, seminars, youth events, visits from emergency personnel, exhibits, and much, much more. Now, therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, as National Night Out in the city of Wenatchee, and encourage and invite all citizens to attend National Night Out that evening at Centennial Park from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 26th day of July, 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Chief Crown, Anna, who's coming up?
What do you mean? You're actually ducking the publicity, right?
Yeah. She's going to take the picture, right?
What do you mean? You're actually ducking the publicity, right?
Yeah. She's going to take the picture, right?
So, Tuesday night, on this...
August 7th, we're going to start shutting down the main street, Wenatchee Avenue, and over here at Yakima, and right here at Rondo. So if you haven't liked this on Facebook yet, the city and the police department have a posting. Go on there, take a look at it, bring down your family, thoroughly food, refreshments, and a lot of good times.
Great. Thanks, Anna, for helping.
Welcome.
All right. First item on our public hearing items tonight is regarding proposed voting districts. So for public hearings, first we'll hear from city staff, which will be Allison and Steve Smith. When we're done fielding questions between the council and their staff, then we'll turn it over to the public. I'll probably take a raise of hands and see how many people want to address the council on that. We will ask that you hold your comments to three minutes, and we would ask that you give us a name and address for the record when you do that. So we will start the public hearing regarding proposed voting districts and turn it over to Allison and Steve Smith.
Good evening, Allison Williams, Executive Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Smith, City Attorney.
So as a part of your consideration tonight, we wanted to provide an overview of the background of the public process that's been carried out for consideration of this question before you this evening. So in 2015, you established the Electoral Process Advisory Committee. You brought together a diverse group of citizens to look at the question of how our city council members are elected. The resolution, 2015-36, wanted to examine the electoral process for city council to promote fairness and equality in that election system, to consider dividing the city into districts. And they were asked to provide a recommendation back in July, which they did, July 2016, and that was followed by a work session with the city council in August of 2016. They carried out bimonthly meetings. The meetings were very intensive. They brought in a number of experts to have the conversation about this issue. They had expert analysis, and they conducted community outreach in a number of forums in both English and Spanish, and did a community survey. A full report and recommendation was delivered to the Wenatchee City Council in July of 2016. They explored three options, seven at-large positions, seven districts, five districts with two at-large positions. In carrying out this, our expert, Bill Cooper, who is also the expert in Yakima and Pasco and looking at, and nationwide, he is an expert in defining how you put together districts. It is one person, one vote. And so looked at our total city population, our total citizen voting age population, the percent of Latino, and then the percent of Latino citizen voting age population. And the idea with districts is that you are putting together a system which would provide the opportunity to have, when you have that percentage of your population that is minority, to have that representation reflected on your city council. So the first one option was looking at our current system of having seven at-large positions. They went through and looked at the pros and cons of each of those systems. So seven at-large provided the largest pool of candidates for each position, and all members were focusing on the citywide as a whole. The con was minority groups were less likely to be represented. And in the Washington State Voting Rights Act, voter dilution is a key component of measures in the new Washington State Voter Rights Act. Another con for seven at-large is neighborhood concerns may not be represented. The second option that they looked at was seven districts. I should mention that our maps have all been updated. This map is overlaid with the neighborhood boundaries that were explored early on with the city a number of years ago. And the newest maps are also available at the door for the public. The seven districts, when we looked at those, they have to be even in population, and so you see across the chart the total population of each district, the total citizen voting age population of each district, the percentage of Latino in each of those districts, and the total Latino citizen voting age population. We're not allowed to look at actually the number of registered voters. It's those who have the potential to vote. For seven districts, the pros of this is the potential to increase geographic, racial, and socioeconomic diversity. The residents have a point person for their concerns, which builds trust with government. Interest specific to particular areas would be raised, and it is the most legally defensible. The con was worry about having candidates from each district who would be ready to run, and the potential for council members to focus on individual districts at the expense of the city as a whole. And I should mention that these pros and cons were developed by the Electoral Process Committee and a part of their report and a part of their presentations out to the community. The third option was five districts with two at-large positions. So again, looking at the total population, the citizen voting age population, the total percent Latino, and the total Latino voting age population. And in this case, District 1 meets the definition of being a Latino-majority district. And all of these numbers were updated. When the maps are drawn, as we reviewed at our June work session, we still have to rely on the 2010 census data. So for the five districts with two at-large positions, the pro is it ensures the presence of a citywide perspective with your two at-large positions. It reduces the likelihood of no candidates filing. It ensures geographic representation and the ability to build trust. A con is there may be friction between citywide and district representatives, and five districts may be too few to increase the diversity on the council. So this recommendation, a recommendation by the Electoral Process Committee was delivered back in July of 2016 and discussed at the work session then. At that time, you had the majority of that committee recommending moving to districts. Seven, a majority recommended seven, and a minority recommended five districts with two at-large. And so we revisited the topic in October of 2016, and there were a number of items that the council wanted to await the outcomes of. At that time, we were looking at a number of annexations. We wanted to work through that process. We also knew the Washington State Voting Rights Act was heading through the legislative process. And so we continued to work with Bill Cooper and have the maps updated. We, at that time, the council gave direction to make sure we reviewed the maps in relation to prior neighborhood boundaries, and that we assured that all conditions of RCW 29876010 were met. In 2018, this year, again, we had a work session where we looked at this. We had the outcome of the passage of the Washington State Voters Rights Act. We again retained Bill Cooper to revisit our maps and update our information. We had that work session in April. And our city attorney was then directed to draft ordinances for council consideration. A number, a couple of our council members also attended the Association of Washington Cities session on this during their conference in Yakima recently, and we learned about the topic and the prescriptive nature of the new Washington State Voters Rights Act. The new law creates the ability to elect in districts at the primary and general election. This was a concern. The state law had required that you can elect at the primary, but everybody had to run at-large in the general election. The new Voters Rights Act eliminates that conflict. Districts provide the opportunity to elect candidates for areas where there is racially polarized voting. Wenatchee's demographics identify that this could be an issue. So these are the tests in the Washington Voters Rights Act. So voter dilution, could there be polarized voting, and are your demographics reflecting that you do have a racial, ethnic, or linguistic minority? So tonight, you have council consideration of the ordinances. The new law has several requirements. And your Electoral Process Committee provided much of the requirements for this. So they provided dual-language outreach and education. This public hearing was advertised in English and Spanish via newspaper, media outlet, social media, and on the radio. In addition, we translated the full executive summary of the Electoral Process Committee report, and we've had that available, as well as the maps on our website, available to the public. And we've been on the radio as well. So tonight, this is a public hearing for this issue. Prelimarily, we have scheduled August 9th for your action. You cannot take action this evening. And the Electoral Process Committee's recommendation included a public outreach and engagement process if you were to move to districts by taking action now. You've got time in advance of filing next May to carry out that process. And we do have a new intern, Myra Hernandez, working with our office this summer, who can help us with that public outreach and engagement. And so at this, we'll turn it over to Steve Smith, who will have the legal review for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. I think Allison pretty well covered the history of how we got to where we are today. So I was asked to prepare the ordinances that would actually implement either of those districting processes. So Ordinance 2018-17 provides for the seven district voting process, and Ordinance 19 provides for the five district with two at-large position process. Describing the boundaries of the district is a little more complicated than just having a pretty colored map. So we, you know, we actually had to have a description that the auditor could work with in describing the new precincts and being able to count the votes. And so we worked with Mr. Cooper, and we're able to describe it using the census blocks and then the map, using the GIS mapping system to come up with an accurate way to do that. So based on the districts he drew for us, we've been able to put that into a format that the auditor could utilize if you adopt this system. So that, so the ordinances basically implement those two systems if you choose to go that The ordinance also provides as to what would happen if you do go to a districting system, what happens to your current position, and that as a current sitting council member. And there's some gray area about that, I think. There's an existing statute that said if you change the, go to a ward system, that sitting council members don't lose their term. And if they're duplicate, if they're duplicated in a district, then they would be reassigned based on their, the length of term remaining. The Act didn't directly repeal that, but it does provide for new elections to be called for if you do go to this districting system under the, under the Act. But it's not gray, it's a little bit gray as to actually when that's triggered. So there are questions floating around about that. My interpretation of it is, you know, we're, the first thing we need to do is address whether or not we want to go to the districts, you know, to make sure we have a fair voting system. And then the issue of the terms is dealt with, because I really don't think the term issue has a bearing on whether or not our voting system is fair and legal. But it's a fair question to a sitting council member, and of course, you want to know what happens to you. But then, so addressing that, my proposal is that we follow the existing law that said you would retain your term until expires, and then you'd have to run in the district where you sat. And I think a principle of statutory construction is that the legislature's presumed to know what the law reads. When they write a new law, you have to read it consistent with an existing law unless they repeal it. And that's about the only way I can interpret that. And I think here, we're trying to do this voluntarily, being proactive to resolve this. I think, I think we're trying to control our own destiny. That's, that's how I would approach it. Others might disagree, but I'm based, you know, until we have case law that interprets this Act, there's going to be some uncertainty. There are just no two ways around it. Are there any other questions you have about the ordinances as we wrote them?
Any questions for Steve or Allison? I just have one, something in the Voters Rights Act about July 19th being the first day that a citizen could come to the city and claim some sort of violation of the Act. Is that a day that the council should be concerned about?
Yeah. Okay. So there's three ways that we can go about this. So we can do this voluntarily, you know, come up, if we think we have a potential violation of the Act, we can voluntarily take a step to remedy it. And that's in essence what we've done. We've proactively approached this since 2015, and we're, now we're at the culmination of the process. Before this Act was even implemented by the legislature, we've been proactive about it. So we've already gone down this road of trying to voluntarily resolve any issue we might have about unfair voting. So under the new Voting Rights Act, we have the ability to do that. If we don't act by July 19th, then a citizen can file what's called a notice, basically a complaint that our system is not fair. And then that starts a process whereby the city has to work with them to come up with a remedy that would make it fair. And then if we're unable, if we're able to reach a resolution with that person who filed the notice, then we go to court and have it approved by the court, and then that's our system. If we can't reach a resolution after a notice is filed, then they have the ability to file a court action after, I think it was 180 days. So that would be the third way to do it, is to be in an adversarial situation, potentially facing a lawsuit. So if we do it, if we resolve it voluntarily before July 19th, then, you know, then we can hopefully avoid that notice situation. Now, any citizen could file a notice later. They might disagree with what we did. So we're subject to that forever.
Either way.
Unless we go to court and ask the court to approve our, the system that we came up with, then we're protected for four years. And so, yeah, under this new Act, we, not only the city, but districts, every city, you know, every municipal government basically is subject to this potential action by a citizen.
So Steve, I have a question in regards to what you just said about anybody could file at any, any point in time. Because with this new law, my concern is this. Assuming we adopt seven districts, five districts, the way the lines are drawn, I see, because we all know that the majority of Latinos live on the south end of town. So the way I see it is, let's say I'm looking at, you know, five districts. District five, if there's not enough Latinos within that district, a Latino can file a notice and say, hey, I think there's, you know, a potential for racial polarization here, and you fix it, because I don't like the way you drew the lines. Is that a fair statement?
Well, any, yeah, any voter can file the notice, and then that starts us down that process. Now, they don't control it necessarily in the sense that we, we can still assert our position that, no, we think it's fair. You know, we've hired Bill Cooper, you know, to, to help us arrive at a fair district to fairly represent the population of the city. We can rely on that. Now, that ultimately would have to be determined by the court as to whether or not it's, it complies with the law. So, yeah, I mean, we're subject to these notices being filed, potentially. But all we can do is we try to do the right thing, have the best advice possible, and then move forward. That's all we can do.
So these boundaries were set by the census report. Were they registered voters or just total voters?
Voting age population.
Okay. Voting age population.
That's what the federal law requires.
Population. The Constitution, one person, one vote. So that's the population. I had a, I have a natural curiosity for the council members that attended the Association of Washington Cities Conference and the session on this, and it's, it has to do with our, I just call it our neighbors. There are, I think, about 200 code cities in the state like us. What's the conversation in, say, East Wenatchee that's not, or any of our other cousins, if you will? Generally, what was the conversation?
Well, I heard from a number of people kind of around, around me where I was sitting, and I can't speak for Allison or Ruth where they were sitting, but the kind of the consensus was, we're kind of, we're kind of the point, and they're going to wait and see how it, how it goes. I think that was kind of what everybody was kind of, you know, they're not, they're not ready to jump in and take off there. They want to see how this thing plays out.
What I heard, to be honest, was they're taking us to the slaughterhouse, because no matter what you do, you're going to get sued. You know, I heard from C-TAC, I heard from C-TAC, they have like 30 different languages at C-TAC.
Right.
And they have a Muslim community there with, you know, two different populations according to how they practice religion. How are you supposed to deal with that?
It's, yeah.
Steve, this is Keith. You, you made a statement that I have a curiosity about. You said if we, if we enacted this and then took this to the courts and had the courts approve what we did, that would protect us for four years. Is there an advantage to taking this before a judge and having him approve this? What would that process look like? And is there an advantage to doing that? And is there an advantage to doing that?
Well, the advantage, I guess, is that it would give you some certainty for four years. The disadvantage is we don't know what the result of that process would be. You know, there's a risk when you go to court. I think if we voluntarily come up with this remedy as we're heading towards now, I guess my hope is that, you know, we've done this as best we can. I would hope that we wouldn't get into that process. And if we do it voluntarily, I wouldn't take it to court. But if we get, get a notice filed, then that's the direction we'd have to go. And when you go that direction, uncertainty for both sides.
Well, the way.
So your recommendation would be to do whatever we're going to do, enact it or not, five or seven, and then take a, wait and see if somebody does bring an action against this before we did anything further?
Yes, that's been my thinking, that, you know, we do, come up with the best rem, best solution to this that we can, and then, and then we have to live with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for our staff?
I have a comment. I'm really concerned about getting sued. I'll, I'll be honest, you know, we are here to represent an entire city. And I don't know, at this point, I know we have to do something, we have to do something. This law is tying us to something. I would like to explore other options, maybe going to three wards or something, to where in each ward we encompass, you know, the, the makeup as much as possible of our community. That's the only way I see us protecting ourselves from a lawsuit. And I know that geographically, our city is north to south, and those boundaries would look kind of weird, because you would have north to south, you know, long wards of north to south. The way I look at our city, the way I look at the maps, that's probably the only way we could protect the city from getting sued, to where each ward would have to have lines that make up exactly what we have as a city as a whole demographically. Because we don't have that right now with the two options we're presented with.
So Ruth, that's what I would suggest, is that we do finish the public hearing, let's get feedback from the citizens, and then if you guys are, want to direct us to have, maybe you work with Bill Cooper directly to look at a third option, that would be fine. But I'd like to hear from the public first and then get some direction once we kind of run through that.
And if I may, going through the process with the committee and looking at the cases that have occurred in Yakima and Pasco, the process that they went through is to define districts that would assure that you would end up with a city, you would have the highest likelihood of assuring that you would have a city council that looks like your community. And so that is why the Electoral Process Committee looked at the seven districts and the five districts, because essentially, if you've got 29% of your population that is Latino, one would think that you would need two to three of your council members as well. And so that would be an argument against the three wards from a legally defensible standpoint, based on my knowledge going through that Electoral Process Committee with the consultants.
The one thing we do know about Mr. Cooper, she's very quick, if we come up with another solution or another option, we could look at it, have the lawyers look at it, talk about legal defensibility.
Right.
Before we vote, if it is that we vote on the ninth.
Sure. Yes.
Okay, so.
Take some testimony.
Yeah, so at this point, we're going to take public testimony. Again, we request that we hold it to three minutes, and Tammy has something for me. Oh, we have a list. Oh, so you're going to make me watch all the names in a public meeting. Perfect. So again, three minutes, we've asked you to name and address for the record. Again, if someone has already said the same thing that you've already said, we'd ask that you not repeat it again, and we're going to go through this pretty quickly. I know the council's got a number of written materials from a number of you, which is great, and that works just the same as public testimony. So I can try to go down the list, but it looks like the first one on here is Freddie Simpson. Freddie, you want to come up? And Tammy has the three-minute clock.
Freddie Simpson, 504 Kitata Street. Mr. Mayor and City Council, first, let me go on record as having asked why the entire County of Chelan does such an effective job with only three commissioners, while the City of Wenatchee needs seven members to be effective. And while that topic might be for another day, it does bring up what is effective representation. As a voter who lives on the border of South Wenatchee's district map, I am not in favor of the district voting. I am not hearing a clear reason for these proposals, other than using ethnicity at its core. The reality is, south end, the south end of Wenatchee has less registered voters than the other districts of the City of Wenatchee. Are these proposals designed to encourage more voters to register by telling them they would now have a voice? If so, show me a city where that has actually happened. We were told voting by, we were told voting by mail would increase the amount of people who would vote, and that has not turned out to be true. The real question should be, how is this proposal in the best interest of the residents of the entire City of Wenatchee? The districts, these district proposals demand that a city council member be voted in and out by only the respective voters within their district. And Mr. Mayor and City Council, unless I'm missing something, no matter what district a council member lives in, their vote affects all 33,000 residents of Wenatchee. This makes no sense. Several years ago, we had a city council member who lived in the north part of Wenatchee who was voted out, and the winner of that race came from South Wenatchee. Under this new proposal, that would never be possible. My understanding is this proposal is being considered out of fear of being sued, either by this Voters Rights Act or the ACLU, something that happened in Yakima. Let's be very clear of this type of thinking. We are not Yakima. Yakima is three times larger in population, with more than a half of its population being made up of a more diverse ethnicity. Finally, as a Hispanic woman, I have seen more inclusion of both voters and candidates from all ethnicities than the history of what happened in Yakima. I would hate that we would consider dividing our city government by ethnicity, rather than what is best for our entire community. Since a vote in this city council affects all residents within the city limits, I want my city council members to be held accountable by all the voters within the city, not just the voters within their respective district. I strongly urge the city council to vote the district proposal down and vote the at-large with the option of voting in the district in the primary and at-large in the general, and do what is best for the 33,000-plus residents of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Mr. or Mrs. Derrick? I couldn't get the first name figured out. Jen, okay.
Really wasn't going to talk. I thought I was just signing in.
You don't want to talk, you don't have to.
Well, I do want to say a couple of things. I did watch the television show that you two were on this morning, and I found it very interesting that, that the discussion of cost was never, in the three years that the committee had been together, nobody had looked at the cost of it. And it may not be very much, it sounded like we have a healthy budget, a healthy save, I don't know. But I, I wanted to bring that up, because I thought that was important, that nobody mentioned that, or it didn't happen. Also, in looking at the map, to me, it does look like we're just trying to avoid a lawsuit. And I get that, you know, nobody wants a lawsuit, but at the same time, it looks like we're being less inclusive. I don't know, it, to me, it does. I've lived, I've owned four homes in this town, myself, and grew up here, and I lived on the south end of town, and it just looks like it's dividing us even more. I don't know how I feel about it, the, you know, five and two, or, and all that, but I just, I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
What I would tell you is that, that in the Yakima case, they're, they totally spent about $2.5 million, sort of defending themselves. We've spent, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 so far getting to this process, so.
Okay.
Small compared to what others have spent. It's still money, it's still taxpayer money, but we're trying to be very careful about, I think most of the money we spent is with Mr. Cooper, the expert, so.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Mr. Lang?
I can see, I'm getting up in on this a bit late, so I'm going to defer and make a written response.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Mike Hughes?
That's me.
Come on up, sir.
1321 Red Apple Road. I, I'm not in favor of the proposed change to a districting, and I think Freddie Simpson's just swatted a home run, so she took the words right out of my mouth, but I think she has a lot of valid points, and, you know, this is an expensive proposition, and I don't think Wenatchee has a problem right now. We're not Yakima, and Yakima had a real obvious problem, and so they should have dealt with that a long time ago. But I just don't see the problem over here in Wenatchee, and I think that, I'm glad that you folks are thinking about the potential, but I don't see us getting sued at all, not right now. And then, if it ever became a problem in the future, we could deal with it by, you know, in short order, is my belief. So I, I think that I'd be happy if you guys just, you know, kind of bailed on it for the time being, because we have a good situation right now. I've never seen a problem yet, so any, anyone can run for a position that's a citizen here, and, you know, I don't think chopping us up into sections is going to help them out, I guess it's going to hurt us, so, there you go.
All right, thanks, Mike.
You bet.
All right, this is Marlene. C-A-M-B, last name, C-A-M?
Barton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mary Ann.
Yeah, I'm trying my best.
That's okay. 1791 Wenatchee Avenue is my address. Could you hear that?
Yep.
Okay. The thing I fear most about displacing our current form of city government is that our citizens will lose that wonderful cohesiveness we currently have as one city with a unified voice. Asking a so-called neutral expert, who is a paid entity, to use impersonal data that will force voters into gerrymandered voting districts is not in the best interests of our citizens. And I do not believe they want you to do this, and I do not believe most of them even know that you're doing it. Collecting copious amounts of data used to divide our citizens according to ethnic status, economic status, and snooping into their individual voting records in order to splinter them into data-based voting districts is going to divide, not unify, our city. Mandated districts are also, and you said not to repeat what others said, so I'm going to throw this in. Mandated districts are an invitation to outside special interests to do their dirty work. Smaller districts are highly attractive takeover targets for special interest groups that are well-funded and cruising for the right candidate to dangle their money in front of. If successful, they will separate us from the values and conservative ideals the majority of our community holds so dear, in order to successfully implement their one-issue agendas. And we've seen this happen a lot with initiatives, and it's going to get worse. My point is, the city is facing very hard issues that will require informed voters who work together within an electoral system. That doesn't hamper their ability to elect the very best people within our city to help lead us. You people are working hard, and you need the very best people we can put on this council to take care of these problems. We already struggle with problems of traffic congestion, the opioid crisis, and other issues, and soon you're going to be dealing with the recent Supreme Court decision, the James decision, that will mandate huge changes in public sector union membership, and that is going to affect you. It appears that within a year, we will pass an initiative that will require you to provide transparency during union negotiations regarding salaries and benefits, so you have a hard row ahead of you. Please do not change our election process. Splitting into mandated districts is a risky, it's an experiment in social engineering, it has no proven track record. Many citizens have no idea whatsoever what you are planning to do to their electoral process. They have a right to be given far more specific details about the drastic changes you are...
That's kind of your three minutes, but we'll give you a couple, another thirty seconds or so to wrap up.
I tried to time this, because I want to respect that, I'm almost done.
Okay.
So just a sec. The citizens of Wenatchee have a right to be given far more specific details about the drastic changes you are considering. You need to slow this issue way, way down, so that the citizens can catch up with you, so they can examine and study it thoroughly. There's absolutely no reason to rush this through. But if you are truly determined to explore a change that is this extensive, it should be brought before the citizens for a vote. If you make these changes and they prove to be wrong, you will never honoring that bell, and you are going to hurt Wenatchee. One other comment after listening to the input very quickly. I know you've hired an expert to help you make these districts, but I believe the experts that you need to listen to are the voters and the citizens of Wenatchee. They are the ones that count, and they are the ones that need to be consulted, and they have a right to vote on this if you are determined to do it. I think it should be stopped. We do not have a problem here. The ACLU should not be telling us how to run our city, the citizens should.
Thank you. All right, Teresa Zepeda.
Bueno, yo voy a tratar de decir en español. Bueno, en inglés. Ah, sí, por favor, señorita, si es tan amable. Mi sugerencia es que hubiera siete, que se implementaran siete distritos.
My suggestion is to implement seven districts.
Porque de esta forma tendremos a un vecino nuestro que nos represente ahí en esas islas.
In that way, we're going to have a neighbor that we know to represent us in the council.
Un vecino que esté mirando los retos que estamos teniendo día a día en el vecindario.
A neighbor that is able to come, bring to you all the challenges that we have day to day.
Que sienta.
That feels.
Que sienta esos retos que estamos teniendo.
That feels the challenges that they are having.
Y también nuestros logros.
And also the things that we are, our goals that we are accomplishing.
Nosotros necesitamos a alguien que sea, no nada más que hable el idioma español, que sea bilingüe, sino que sea bicultural.
We not only need somebody that is bilingual, but also bicultural.
Para que nos pueda representar efectivamente.
So that we are effectively represented.
Esta fue mi sugerencia, muchísimas gracias.
This is my, my suggestion, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, Karen, and I can't pronounce your last name.
It's Kelly.
Ah, okay.
Hello, I do have copies of a prepared statement for you.
Address for the record.
I'm Karen Kellyman, and I live in East Wenatchee, 326 North Kansas. Dear Mayor Kuntz and City Council members, I come before you today offering my support for a decision to adopt a seven district, voting by district plan for the election of future city council members. I support this proposal because, after all of the analysis, the number crunching is completed. The election of representatives by district is, in my opinion, simply the right thing to do for the right reasons. Wenatchee is a growing city with changing economy and demographics. Your continued support to respond to that growth, as demonstrated by your responsible allocation of taxpayer resources, balanced budgets, plans for the future, interest in diversity, all these things demonstrate to me that you are doing good work for the residents within your city boundaries. Reaching out inclusively to groups of people who are often underserved, actively seeking input and honoring that input through action, can only improve future outcomes. Making it not only possible for Latinos, Latinas, and others to earn a seat at the decision-making table can only improve communications and understanding, and create government that is more representative. I applaud Mayor Kuntz and the council for having convened the advisory committee that reviewed voting by districts. I am pleased to have attended most of their meetings during the course of a year of review. I witnessed an honest and fair examination of the issue demonstrated by all members of the committee with no... of the committee, with none showing a particular bias toward one outcome. We all learned a great deal. Their majority recommendation at the conclusion of their review was well-researched and thoughtfully examined from all points of view and impacts. I, like most of the committee, was convinced that a seven district plan was the best recommendation. I still believe that. Providing a vehicle by which a neighborhood district may elect from among their peers a representative to take their voice to the decision-making table will be empowering. As in Yakima and Prosser, I respect, I predict that many will step forward to lead. We all benefit when government is truly representative. Although I live across the river, I'm eager to see fair representation at all of our tables of govern, governance. As the, our valley, our future effort has demonstrated, we are one community, connected in so many ways. I urge you to make the choice for inclusion and take a position of leadership in North Central Washington. Others will follow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Karen. Alma Chacon, where's Alma? There she is.
Good evening. My name is Alma Chacon. I'm a citizen of the United States. I'm a voter in the Wenatchee Valley, and I am Latina, and I was one of the members of the Electoral Process Committee on assignment for this project two years ago. I live as well as own a business in South Wenatchee, and I have learned a lot about the electoral process, and I'm very glad that I was able to participate, so I wanna thank you for that experience. After a year-long process, and with input from the consultant Bill Cooper, after many discussions and dialogue with other members of the committee as we sat through different meetings, and with the input from our community as we reached out, we came up with a recommendation to the city council. That recommendation was to discontinue the, the seven-at-large system and to move to a seven-district voting system. This was the recommendation by eight of our members on the committee. Uh, we did have a minority, uh, group that recommended a seven district and two-at-large. Moving to a seven-district system is in line with the current work that the city is working on in engaging our community. Districts are not new, and there are many effective district systems in place already. If we look around us, we have the water district, we have the school districts, we have many other districts. Um, at the state level, we have legislative districts, we have representatives that represent us at, uh, based on what district they represent, and our legislators are there to represent all of us, uh, based on where we live. The districts were put in place in order to hear the voice of all the people, as is the intent of the Washington State Voting Rights Act. Right now, we have a great opportunity in Wenatchee to be more inclusive. Uh, this, we have an enormous opportunity to engage our community as we move to the seven district. How wonderful to have every area of our city represented. We do have people that believe that they are not represented, and, and it's through no intentional doing by any of you, by any of us. Okay? And, uh, we do have a wonderful opportunity. It will build on to Wenatchee, our valley theme, and the current work in progress by the city. It'll support the mission of the city's Diversity Council that states Wenatchee is a community where diversity is welcomed, valued, and celebrated. The Diversity Council advocates recognition, respect, inclusion, and celebration of the greater Wenatchee area's diverse people. Going to a seven-district system will allow for more focus, a more for focused effort around the city as districts work together to ensure the city's mission of we promote a safe community and equality of life through protection and service. It will, Alma was saying. It will empower all areas of the city to elect their person of choice, regardless of who it may be, it'll be someone in their neighborhood. It will build community, we can see it as a positive move. Finally, district systems are inclusive and promote a more representative form of government. Again, it can build bridges and enable greater representation at the local level, which will allow our local government to promote equitable resources for all of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Alma. Penelope Tobiska?
I will just defer to Karen Kellyman and to Alma Chacon. I, again, agree with them about the positive effect that the seven districts would have, including, um, all of our community.
Great, thank you. Joe Morrison, you wishing to address the council?
Thank you, Joe Morrison, three ten White Birch Place. The committee has heard from me a lot, so I'll try to be extremely brief and not repeat anything I've said previously. I just wanted to, one, thank the staff for all the work they've done, I thought the presentation was excellent, I thank the council for all their work to study this. I had one slight correction to, um, or addition to what Ms. Williams said about the, um, districting. It does not in any way guarantee representation on the council by anybody. It simply sets up the foundation of the system. So there's nothing within the plans that guarantees representation for anybody, it just gives the opportunity for people to come and, and run from their district and hopefully be elected, but it doesn't guarantee representation by any race or ethnic group on the committee, so that's very important to understand. The, the other comment I just would make is that I support conservative American principles, just as the audience members do, is we all agree that in this country, the most, one of the most fundamental rights of our constitution is the right to vote, and for that vote to count, count equally, one person, one vote. There's not a person in this room that doesn't disagree with that American principle. This system of, uh, voting by districts, whether you like it or not, virtually everyone that's looked at it has said that's the fairest system out there, there's no perfect system. Nobody developed a perfect system, nobody came in and said this is the most perfect system, and nobody said that it's gonna guarantee that more people are gonna run for office or more people are gonna vote, that wasn't the purpose of the committee. It was to come up with the fairest system possible to protect our constitutional rights to vote. So that's what that has done, so it's, it's really for that reason, those principles that we all agree on that we should be looking at the system and voting for districts, that's what I believe. It's not about fear of lawsuits, however, that is a factor, I, and council members have expressed that fear tonight. If that's a, if that's a fear that's driving anyone, we ought to be going after the most legally defensible option available, which is the seven districts, which the experts said if you do that, you'll be in the best position to protect yourself. My final comment will be, someone mentioned gerrymandering, and that issue drives me crazy because this is not gerrymandering. Gerrymandering, the definition of gerrymandering is people behind closed doors, people in power behind closed doors designing districts to keep themselves in power. That's the furthest thing that happened here. None of you were involved in drafting these lines or in drafting these districts that was done by an outspoken expert who was told specifically, "Do not look at where these council members live." He drew the districts accordingly, so in no way, shape, or form could this be characterized as gerrymandering. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Joe. Anybody wish to address the council on this item that didn't sign in? I will give a couple of folks, so we got a hand to the left, hand to the right, hand, so we'll start with the left, and then we'll go to the right. Stand up, sit down, fight, 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 that's a chair, isn't it?
You're dating yourself.
Thank you. My name is Susan Ballinger, and I appreciate the chance for citizen participation in government. And when I first moved to Wenatchee twenty-five years ago, one of my first questions was, "Why don't we have representative districts?" I've lived in Wisconsin, and Montana, and Washington, and I was actually floored that I didn't get to have somebody representing my neighborhood. I've had a lot of concerns about safety issues on Skyline Drive. I don't feel like I have a councilperson that I feel like would be interested in my neighborhood topic. Um, I feel a little bit disconnected, partly because I haven't felt that, you know, anybody really is particular about my neighborhood's geography and issues. My second issue is I really like the idea of representational government, and the fact I so, I was so amazed at the people that you got to serve in that committee, I followed it carefully in the paper. You chose fabulous community people who donated a lot of time. As a scientist, I value looking at the literature and the research, and you did that, so just applause to you for actually using best available science in the social science world and looking at what is gonna be best that is legally defensible. So, there's no perfect system, and I think the chance that I have maybe to campaign and help someone who wants to run in my district, I'd like to be able to do that, and you all then will work together, just like in our, in our, uh, our, our state representative house and at the national level. You don't go just to advocate for your area, you go to do the best for your state or for your region, and by having several different voices from seven different geographies, it's going to make a richer discussion and a richer decision-making process. And I think having those little fears, those little, you know, red flags, is gonna be the best way to avoid the problems that, that you're worried about and you're expressing. I'm very excited, when I moved here twenty-five years ago, I was concerned that I was moving to a small town where my three young children would not be exposed to diversity, and I was so excited to get to go to Lincoln Elementary where my kids could be with kids who live in their neighborhood who don't look like me. And one of the things I have worked for, for many years, and I thank the Wenatchee Diversity Council, I did receive recognition for co-founding the college mentor program at Wenatchee High School, because I see all the benefit from what people from different backgrounds and perspectives bring when we reduce barriers to access. So the college mentor program is reducing barriers to college access, you, by choosing the seven district system, you are reducing barriers to access for decision-making. So I really applaud you for taking on the year of study, for spending the money on a hired expert, and for not being part of the drawing of the lines. I just, I thought everybody here would be humming to congratulate you, and that's kind of why I came. I'm just really proud of what you've done, so thank you.
Thanks Susan. Let's go over to the right, who had their hand up over there?
Good evening, everybody, and my name is Adriana Farnsworth, and I, I am not for the district, and, uh, I'm an example of, uh, of when, when you have the type that right now we have. Somebody bought for me, and there was an other side, that north side, and, and the different, and the west, everywhere, they could vote for me, and that makes me very, very happy. But if we go for those districting, I would not have that chance, and I don't want, you know, people go through that. If somebody else wanted to run like I did, I do not want them to go through that, because, you know, this is dividing us, in, like, you know, Freddie Simpson said, it is so true. The way we are right now, we've been for so long, and, uh, we, we don't have, you know, I don't know why you just keep on saying that they're gonna get sued, and they're gonna get sued. We don't, we not sure, like, uh, the lawyer said, we, we not sure it's gonna be the best. We're not sure that we're gonna do better, then, we, we are doing so well this way, you know, that I think it is, we will have a suit if we divide the people, because they will feel like, if I, I see that maps, and both sides says, you know, our side of Wenatchee South is very, very little, so we will not have a chance, like everybody's saying here, that districting will have a chance, we won't. So I just can't say that, you know, that I am an example that what happened, you know, I will not have that chance, and I please ask you, I know you work very hard in this, I know that, but I just ask you to not to do districting. Thank you.
Thanks Adriana. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Brian Campbell, eighteen thirty-seven Jefferson Street, and I'm not gonna give another dissertation, 'cause you've, you've heard it, but I am going to repeat the, um, the comments that I made on June twenty-eighth at the meeting, because council members Bailey, Esparza, and Markart were off at a, a work session, I believe, out of state or out of, out of the town, so I just wanted to, uh, readdress the council. And before coming today, I got a lot of questions about this issue, and basically, the response I got from most people is, "If it ain't broke, why fix it?" The, the reasons I've heard for changing the current at-large system, which is working well for Wenatchee, are as follows. If Wenatchee doesn't switch to districts, we'll be sued. Over ninety percent of the cities in Washington State use the current at-large system, and for the last three years, I have not seen a lawsuit. That's the system they use for electing the council members, and no evidence has been provided to suggest that Wenatchee would be sued for not switching to districts. With the passage of the Voting Rights Act, if Wenatchee is sued, the council can switch to districts at that time, and the problem would be solved. The other, another question, number two, Wenatchee needs more geographic representation on the council. Currently, three council members live in North Wenatchee and four live in South Wenatchee. Districts would actually lead to even more seats being appointed by the council. Wenatchee's a very small community, talking about districts and legislative, um, positions on a statewide basis, that's because, look at the landmass you're talking about, the square miles that each person represents. Wenatchee's very dense, I think it's one of the densest cities in, uh, in Eastern Washington, if not the most dense city. Number three, Wenatchee needs more Latino representation on the council. Switching to districts could mean that our only Latino council member, Ruth Esparza, would have to run for her seat against Keith Huficker and Linda Harold, because they all live in the same district. I don't know when their terms come up, if that would happen at the same time, but eventually. Assuming all candidates have an equal chance, there's a sixty-seven percent chance that our only Latino council member would be removed from the council. Then you actually might be at risk of being sued. Number four, it's the logical next step, or I'm willing to give it a try. Those statements are based on hopes and ideology. The analyses and facts simply don't support those statements. It was mentioned earlier about the cost, have you analyzed that cost truly, uh, the total cost over the last three years, not counting time, 'cause that's very expensive, in making this leap of faith in both monetary terms and dividing up our small community? How much time and money has been spent over those three years? The citizens have been working hard and making good progress at uniting our community. Why do you think dividing our community will be a good idea? That'd be as similar to having seven different cities of Wenatchee. Right now, we've got Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, and people say we should unite those, it's too bad that we're divided. Now you're gonna put seven more divisions on one side of the river. Have you talked to the people that would live on the miles of district borders, and asked them how they would feel about people across the street or in any other districts not being able to vote for the candidate in their district? Please don't rely on those recommendations, others' recommendations, and do your own analysis before voting. The citizens of Wenatchee aren't asking for a change, but they will most certainly be asking you for your reasons if you make a change. Please let the citizens decide with their vote. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Brian. Alright, anybody else wish to address the council on the districting proposals that are in front of us? If not, oh, yes, sir? Name an address for the record.
My name's Larry Tobiska, sixteen eighteen Central Avenue. I want to encourage the council to act affirmatively in the way that the study group recommended. I think that, that is probably the best source, the best study that will provide you input and deserves your very weighty consideration. I can understand the concerns that, um, there might be a tendency to have some disagreement, some divergence of views if you have representatives from each segment of the city, but isn't that what the council is for? It seems to me that this proposal, seven districts, perhaps five with two at large, but probably seven, because that's what your study group recommended, is the best way to see that each segment of the city is represented, to bring it together, and then the council members so elected, melt it down, synthesize it, and come up with the best decision, so I urge you to go ahead and act on that.
Thanks Larry. Alright, anybody else wish to address the council? Alright, we will close the public testimony portion, and I'm gonna turn over the council not for their action tonight, because, um, according to our attorney, we cannot take action tonight, so I think two issues, one would be, when are we gonna take action? Currently, we've got it scheduled for August the ninth, if that still meets with your approval, we'll do it then. We could call a special meeting next week if you'd like to, but our city attorney will not be present. not be present. He's vacationing next week. So, not only will he not be present for the meeting, but he wouldn't be present during the week if we had questions.
Well, I would offer that actually, we will take action tonight, and it will be to continue the hearing and the parameters of that. At least, I'll be offering a motion on that. But I'd like to start some discussion, and I have a question for Mr. Smith, and I didn't really mean to put our county auditor, Mr. Moore, on...
Keith, you still there?
I think it's lost weight.
I am here, yes.
All right, we're getting a little bit of feedback.
I have, just, this is just this general curiosity, that will this act, may it change the way that we elect boards of county commissioners in non-charter counties? Because we nominate from a primary, and then we elect countywide. Does the Voters Rights Act potentially change that and for the other districts, like public utility districts and whatnot? Do we know?
Well, I honestly say I didn't analyze it from the point of the county.
Yeah, I know you're the city's attorney, but that's why, I didn't mean to put Mr. Moore on the spot. He might have a little more insight.
If you're asking me, I did not study it from that point of view. It definitely could have an impact on districts. I have been worried about it from a school district perspective.
So, Mr. Moore, would you mind commenting from your understanding of the act?
My understanding of the new Voters Act, the Washington State Voter Act, is that any municipal government is at risk or can be changed as a result of the, I challenge, or just put it this way, any at-large system can be challenged.
Okay.
Regardless of the scope.
So, that would mean a county could be put into districts and other sort of...
Well, the county is in districts. But it could be moved to district-only voting for legislative officials.
It's open district voting only for the county, yes.
Yeah.
Or school districts, or cities, DUDs.
Can I ask, I don't understand, I want to understand the, about the county, I'm sorry to interrupt.
We're just asking if the Voters Rights Act applies to counties. The current Voters Rights Act that just passed the legislature in April, it became law a few weeks ago, does it apply to county government? And it does. And it applies to school districts? It does.
It does.
So, that's why I'm confused. So, we have three county commissioners, how would it affect that?
So, it's possible that right now, they run their primaries in their district, and they run the general countywide.
Right.
If someone tested that, they might run their primary in the district and one countywide in their district, and not have a countywide total election. Right? And school districts are currently at-large, they could follow a different district boundary as well. Right? If someone said, hey, I can't get elected to the school, same sorts of rules apply.
State runs scared from the ACLU, they'll take it now the same.
What I would say is it's state law. No one's running scared from the ACLU. We're trying to adapt to state law. But let's take it back, I mean, this is, we're kind of on the public hearing part, we're sort of figuring out what's next for us. So, is August?
Well, I guess I had, just, I was thinking about Councilmember Asparza's comments and how we've discussed this, and almost the whole discussion has been centered on, how do we create, do we or do we not create wards or districts? How do we do it? And talking about representation of populations, and yet, there's, are those, Mr. Smith pointed out in his briefing paper, that there are other criterion for establishing boundaries. And one, you know, one of them that I think that we've discussed at length is the one that recognizes natural geographic and neighborhoods, which I think has been some of our discussion and my observations of the committee's processes. How do you, how do you preserve neighborhoods, the neighborhood feel when we do this? I mean, there's, there's the issue of underrepresented populations, but there's also those other criteria that are in there that have to be respected, I assume. None of them trump the other. I assume it's all a stew.
Well, it all comes down, what does trump everything is the fair voting, you know, whether or not you have polarized voting or diluted votes. So, all of that stuff becomes subject to that. And I don't think you'll ever have a perfectly drawn district that's, you know, perfectly square, and, you know, if you look at the districts that Mr. Cooper did draw, they aren't geographically similar exactly, but it's the best he could do to get the population right. So, I, you know, and that's the way the law reads it, you have to do it as close as reasonably possible.
And I think locally, we've seen that with the eighth congressional district stopping at Kentucky in East Wenatchee, which excludes the population in Rock Island and the airport and everything from what we would consider a homogeneous community. These things happen.
Well, even including us in that district, that's represented by a West Side elected representative, isn't necessarily fair.
I only wanted to create a safe district.
That's a different issue.
Yeah.
I guess you were looking at it, you're now looking at it from the neighborhood perspective, which is good. I mean, it is one of, you know, the factors to be considered, and I was just looking at it from the racial polarization aspect of it.
Yeah, I was just trying to look at all the things that are on our plate, including that.
But I know that one of the elements, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, is, you know, for somebody to be successful in suing, is that the court would have to look at whether or not there's racial polarization going on. That's what I, that's why I'm looking at it from that perspective.
Sure.
All right, so what's the plan for going forward?
Well, let me put a motion on the floor here, then it could be voted on, amended, whatever, that we continue our hearing on this matter to the Thursday, August 8th, 2018 meeting, which will begin at 5:15 PM. And this will be for decision only, there will be no more oral public input accepted at that time.
That being the 9th, is what we have, August 9th?
Yeah, August 9th, Thursday, August 9th. And that we would still encourage folks to submit written comments, and to help staff get those to us, I would propose that we have a Thursday, August 2nd, 4:00 PM deadline for those to be submitted to the city clerk, so they can be packaged and bundled and put into electronic format for delivery to us, and those comments be sent to the city clerk and not to the individual council members, so that we make sure that our record is complete. That would be my basic motion for now.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kulas and a second by Councilmember Harold to continue the public hearing item till the 5:15 PM on Thursday, August 9th, only for the purposes of voting and not taking additional public comment, but public comment will be taken through the city clerk's office through Thursday, August 2nd. Is that my understanding of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? I would ask Ruth, if you're interested in looking at some of those wards in different sorts of ways with Bill Cooper, feel free to do that. If you think that's important to your decision-making, or want to provide it to us as another alternative, feel free to contact Bill and work with him. I know you've got some, I think we're just trying to figure out the best. I have no problem with you spending some time with him and working on that as well, but make sure we get it well in advance of the meeting on the 9th. Discussion on the motion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. So, that motion carries, so we'll conclude the public hearing item regarding districts. The next public hearing item is a CDBG public hearing item. We'll take a little three-minute recess, and we'll re-adjourn at 6:38. So, we may, Chief, you want to drop a door back there, Brad? Just for...
It's just, that's all right, I don't know, man.
Pull a gun out or something.
Here we go.
Pull a gun out might work, yeah. All right, Keith, you still with us?
I am, and just so you know, I have been muted, so I'm not sure where the feedback is coming from. I could hear it on my end as well.
We just had a little bit of it.
Phone system doing something, or what's going on?
It's actually quite a bit better than it's been in the past, so. All right, our next public hearing is regarding CDBG fund plan update, so we'll hear from Brooklyn, and we'll hear from members of the audience, and then we'll turn over to council for any action. So, Brooklyn, how are you?
Good. Brooklyn Holton Housing and Community Planner for the city of Wenatchee. And I normally come to you guys with just the annual action plan, but we are updating our consolidated plan this year to reflect an extension, and so, I'm going to be providing a presentation that touches on both the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. The consolidated plan is a five-year plan that we developed to guide long-term work that we do with the community development block grant funding, and the annual action plan is what we utilize on an annual basis to identify what we're going to do in the short term with the funding that we get from HUD on an annual basis. So, we began receiving funds in 2005, and it's varied since then. It started decreasing after that initial fund by just under $200,000, and in 2014, it kind of started shifting and going back up again, and we've seen an almost $50,000 increase since then. You can see, there's just kind of a example of the change that we've had since 2016. This is the biggest jump we've had, so a lot of that $45,000, $45,500 happened between 2017 and 2018. So, the update that I mentioned that we're doing to the consolidated plan, we have a requirement from, a federal requirement for an affirmatively furthering fair housing plan to be developed, and we have an option to do that in conjunction with East Wenatchee, who's also entitlement community, and the Housing Authority of City of Wenatchee in Shland County. So, we sent in a letter to HUD to request that we have an extension of our consolidated plan, so that we can align our planning efforts with the other two entities, and that was approved. Their direction back to us was a requirement to extend our consolidated plan. We had to then update all of the data goals and policies to reflect that extra two years in the plan. So, an estimate of around $200,000 each year would increase our consolidated plan budget by about $400,000, and because of this, it's a large update, and we are required to do a public hearing for this change. So, we're combining it with the normal annual action plan public hearing. The, in addition, the program year that we normally have is April 1st to March 31st, but we are working to connect with HUD on changing that program year as well, so that our program year can align with that of East Wenatchee, and also begin after the federal budget has been released, so we're not creating a plan based on estimates, so we have actual numbers, so. As you've seen, we have the South Central Wenatchee Core as our identified target area, where the work that we do with the community development block grant funds takes place. This was updated in 2014. The main objectives identified in the consolidated plan and subsequent annual action plan is to improve, preserve and improve neighborhoods, reduce homelessness, support public services, and develop economic opportunity. Annually, we identify preserve and improve neighborhoods and support public services as the two focuses that we fund via CDBG. We work with our, the Shland Douglas Ten Year Plan to End Homelessness for the homelessness efforts, and then periodically, we've done economic opportunity, and that also kind of is supported through, the literacy council that's written down there is considered a public service, so we support that through that work. In 2018, we received $242,460 from HUD, and we, last year, we had quite a bit of program income at almost $100,000 that we were not expecting, so we, and then we had a little bit of funding left over from some projects that didn't get fully completed. So, we have almost $120,000 of rollover for this year, for almost $360,000 total to be allocated towards project in the 2018 program year. So, this is essentially what that looks like, just kind of a breakdown of what was, what came over from the previous year, that Shland Avenue reimbursement, I was sorry, what came over from the previous year combined with our current year, and what I'm recommending that we fund with the funding, with the amount of money that we have this year. And so, program admin and planning is capped at 20%. We can't spend more than that, and that's based on the federal allocation, so irrelevant of any extra funding that rolls over. The sidewalk construction contract, that is just, has a small amount. We're using that to maintain that contract to be open until that project is fully complete. Shland Avenue reimbursement, we brought, or I brought this to our finance committee, and we're looking at whether or not the option to fully pay back this $245,000 is what we'll do, or will we look at other opportunities for assisting in that fund? If we do choose to change the amount that's there, and it makes a greater impact than 25% of the total budget, I will be doing an amendment to the annual action plan to identify an alternative project. As of right now, we don't have an alternative project, and so we're maintaining this option until something gets identified.
When you say "alternative project," though, you're talking about an alternative...
Like an economic project.
Yes.
Yeah, not an alternative.
Not necessarily building something, but another way of expending the resources.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Code enforcement, $36,700, that's a project. That goes to support the code enforcement officers that do the work in the South Wenatchee area each year. The literacy council and the referral and debris removal, those are combined capped, because they're public services, at 15% of our total annual allocation. And the literacy council is normally at $20,000, but it's at $35,000 to reflect the extra quarter that we'd be doing to extend our program year to align with East Wenatchee. So that's a little bit higher than you normally would see it. And then the referral and debris removal is to support individuals who might be out of compliance with code and need financial support to get into voluntary compliance, whether it's vegetation, or removal of garbage, or debris, something like that. So this is just some details on why it says sidewalk construction, or sorry, Shland Avenue reimbursement. In 2016 and 2017, we identified the Shland project as an opportunity to save costs by borrowing ahead on the funds that we receive from HUD. And so the general fund and TIB funding was used in advance with the expectation that the CDBG funding would pay it back during the 2018 program year and the 2019 program year. And so we do allocate that funding to that. So this is what the expenditures have been since 2016, with the estimation, we have a minimum reimbursement payment established for 2019, if that's how much is remaining, once the project is complete, which should be this summer. So just details, we have our citizen participation plan, which requires that we do at least two public hearings each year. We pair those with the annual action plan and the end-of-year report, which is the CAPR, so we already had that one. A notice of public hearing was published in the Wenatchee World on June 8th, and the planning commission listened to the public hearing, the same presentation, and recommended approval. And there were no public comments received in the public hearing from any residents, although the planning commission did provide an update. The rail company in the consolidated plan was not correct, and so we had to change that to Burlington Northern from Chicago-Seattle, I think is what it was written as. And then they also identified to ensure that any recommendation that is used with Seattle, or any more urbanized areas, an example, to be ensured that it's relative to our community. And, any questions?
Any questions for Brooklyn? Comment for me. I enjoy seeing the sidewalks get built, and I hope we continue to do more of those. I do appreciate your ability to want to try to get some of that funded a different way and free up for programs. So hopefully, I know Steve was going to work and try to figure out a way to make that happen. So interested to see if we can get to that point.
Yeah, thank you.
Any members of the audience wish to address the city council on this public hearing item? Seeing no takers, I will turn it over to the council for their action, which is regarding Resolution 2018-28.
Your honor, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-28, amending the city of Wenatchee's 2013-2017 Housing and Community Development Consolidated Plan.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Poyer, to adopt Resolution 2018-28, amending the city of Wenatchee's 2013 through 2017 Housing and Community Development Consolidated Plan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brooklyn. Thank you for all your work on this. All right, and thanks to the audience members. We usually do action items first and public hearings last, but we obviously switched that today for the districting, so we have a number of action items. The first is regarding the final agreements for Pine Shadow, the Mylar, and the development agreement. So, Rob, are you doing that? Rob?
Glenn.
Glenn, okay. And then we will take some comments. So let's just, Rob, why don't you just kind of go through both items C and D? Then we'll take some comment from the public, and then we'll take action items on both C and D.
Well, I'll address the first item, which is the improvement agreement. So the developer did submit that in our standard form, and so we'll just need the mayor's, seeking the mayor's signature on that. The bond amount is just about 1.7 million, is the performance bond on that. And then I'll go ahead and turn over the rest of that on the subdivision to Glenn. And Mr. Mayor, would you like me to address that at this point now?
Yeah, just go ahead and do the Mylar as well, and then we'll turn it over to the audience who might wish to address us on this.
Perfect. Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director. The preliminary plat of Pine Shadows was submitted. Let me see, received preliminary approval on April 3rd, 2018. We've received a final plat review, and now a final Mylar and improvement agreement for 37 lots. Staff and community development and the public works have gone through that process and with accommodating agencies and found that all requirements of state law and the Wenatchee code have been met, that the conditions imposed by the preliminary plat have been met. As noted, we have a development agreement that's been signed by staff, and that the public use and interest are served by the approval of the subdivision. And adequate provisions have been made for the necessary infrastructure and improvements. And staff recommends that the council authorize the mayor to sign the final plat. I would like to note that the, in waiting for the final Mylar, which we have tonight for the mayor, should he be authorized to sign, there are two minor changes to it that we were waiting for. One is the turnaround by Lot 33 is an easement, not a tract. In the lot lines between 32, Lot 32 and 33, there was a minor amendment, which we had been waiting for. But the, all the conditions and expectations set by the hearings by the mayor and state law have been met. Would stand for any questions this evening on that, if you have any?
Any questions for either Rob or Glenn regarding either the development agreement, the amount of the bond, or the Mylar? Hearing none. Members of the audience, who would like to address the council on this matter? Jim, you going to come up?
Yeah, I got to come quick.
Sure. Glenn and Rob, don't go very far. Stay in the front row.
Yeah, Jim Shea, and I live on Meadows Drive, which is a development that butts up against the new development. So after, I've got some questions after talking with our neighbors and in the neighborhood, as well as some neighbors that are along the property line. One of them is, what is the plan for retaining wall or fence along the property line? Right now, my yard butts up against the development. And my backyard was at the same level as the orchard, and dirt's been brought in, so it's about three feet higher than my yard. So I've got about three feet of dirt height up to my fence. So retaining wall or fence, I would expect might be coming, I'm not sure. So that was one question.
Okay, and I don't know that we can answer that, because I don't know what our code requires for a house building permit and a retaining wall. Does our housing code require that?
Mr. Mayor, I can't recall whether the difference between a planned development and a standardized development, whether it requires a fence or not. But I know that staff did review it for conditions of approval, and that it has met the requirements.
Okay, so you'll get back to Mr. Shea about whether or not that's going to be a requirement.
Right, right. And is there a reason it was built up so high and not level with the orchard?
You would have to ask, it didn't violate any conditions of approval, but you could certainly ask the developer that question.
Okay, okay. And then the plan for the drainage, we're kind of wondering about that.
That was reviewed by the development review engineer and found to be compliant.
So are we talking about drainage of the road, or drainage of the property that butts your property?
Both, the road.
Okay, so the road drainage will be handled internal, and then specifically to the lot that's near yours, that would, I think, have to be dealt with by whoever's building the house.
By the homeowner?
Yeah.
And then there are certain building requirements as far as when you do build a single-family on the home, as far as how you do that, as far as drainage.
Yeah, so part of the building permit for the house that might go next to you would deal with some of the drainage issues.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just some of the concerns from the houses along the development was that with the erosion on that dirt, if there's no, if there's no retaining wall.
Has there been dust blowing with this wind?
There has been, there has been dust. It's been getting better. It looks like it might have been addressed, but at the very beginning, that was the...
Got some windy days and ate a little dirt?
It blew some dirt, yeah. I mean, we've got neighbors with swimming pools, and it was filling their swimming pools and ponds, and that was a mess. But it seems like that's been under control. So the biggest concern was the raising of the property, and if there's going to be a retaining wall or fence or something that's going to keep that from eroding onto our fence.
Okay, so we'll have staff deal with the developer, and we'll get back to you about those issues.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thanks, Jim.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else wish to address the council on the Pine Shadow chart plat? Or subdivision, or whatever it is? Some sort of legal dividing of land. All right.
I have a question. It's a money question. The improvement agreement has the heading for recording. Are these recorded with the auditor? And if so, who pays the recording fee, since the first-page recording fee is now like $99?
Do we record these? I don't know.
It's formatted for recording, I was just wondering if it actually was recorded, or whether it was just held in file.
It's my understanding that it is recorded, and if there is a recording fee, that would be passed on to the applicant. But I can get back to you that.
That's all I was curious about.
But, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the improvement agreement for Pine Shadow as delivered to us via email.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey to authorize the mayor's signature on the improvement agreement for Pine Shadow as emailed to the council this week. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
I'm just going to add my discussion. I actually talked to Glenn about this earlier. And I, if you look at the notices that we sent out to the public, you know, they based their decision that everything was okay, and they didn't attend the public hearings, because it looked and assumed to them that the level of the land was going to be maintained. We've had a couple of cases now where a new development has come in and built next to an existing neighborhood, and for some reason, the neighborhood feel was not the same because of all the filled dirt that was brought in next to an existing neighborhood. So now, instead of it being another house that you looked at as a normal neighborhood, instead of seeing a house, you see a big pile of dirt with either retaining wall and a fence on top of that, and then the house on top of that. And I'm just trying to figure out why we don't have those kind of things in our code. And I know Jim Bailey and I have had a couple of discussions about this. And I was just hoping that maybe we can address this in the future to maybe prevent some of these issues.
Okay, well, we'll have staff at least look at it. I, we've kind of stayed away from view corridor stuff, but we need to, I suppose, be a little bit careful about some of this. We've had a couple of issues where...
Yeah, birching development over there, same thing.
Yeah, one in Western a while ago, so... I think it's fair to have our staff at least look at that for purposes of...
We could do it sooner if you'd like. Or one way we could address it is I do have it on the list of items when we come before you for our yearly work plan to discuss. And we can talk about different ways that can be looked at, and see if there's an interest in overall direction from the council to look at it further, if that would be something you'd like to do.
Why don't you just plan on it, and we'll tell you no if, for some reason, we change our mind?
Okay.
Does that work?
Sounds good.
All right, so we do have a...
Thank you.
We do have a motion by Councilmember Kula, and a second by Councilmember Bailey to approve the development agreement. We've had discussion. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the council to authorize the mayor to sign the final plat for Pine Shadow, P-17-03.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Markart to authorize the mayor's signature on the final Mylar for Pine Shadow, P-17-03. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. All right, Item E is regarding the homeless grant funding changes. So Glenn DeVries. Where are you going, Glenn? Okay, different papers.
I'm also inviting Holly Anderson, who has some really good news.
Hi, Holly.
Hello.
To this evening. So before you, we have two items for the homeless program for some funding that we, with recommendations from the steering committee. But first of all, the first item is under, for Catholic Charities Housing Services Funding Award. And Catholic Families has a proposed 67-unit low-income housing facility that would include 33 units designated for permanent supportive housing for the homeless. With the recent passage of House Bill 1570, there are a new series of funds available to be allocated to the homeless program that the steering committee reviews and the city administers. And the steering committee recently recommended that of the new funding that's available to the program, that $181,000 per year for a four-year term be allocated to the 67-unit project. And this is a project that Catholic Family Charities has been working really hard with a variety of partners to find and funding sources to put together. And this was just one item that was, if approved by city council, would be really helpful moving that forward. But maybe before you make a decision, the importance of that collaboration, and all the pieces coming together, Holly, would you like to give the good news?
Yes, thank you for having me, Mayor Kuntz and council members. I'm Holly Anderson, I'm with Catholic Charities Housing Services. Based out of Yakima, I've been working in Wenatchee for the last three years, trying to bring this development to life. And with the funds that were secured through the county, and then today, the last piece of final funding was approved. We received $12.56 million in tax credits, and this development should start around this fall.
That's all right.
Very good. This is a component, and put all together, this can move forward this year. So it's pretty exciting, and so we would recommend, the staff would recommend, and it's the recommendation from the homeless steering committee, that you authorize these funds. And then the second component before you this evening is every year, every cycle, sometimes we receive additional CHG Consolidated Homeless Grant Funds, and we were pleased to receive $88,703 additional dollars. The homeless steering committee reviewed funding and programs under the 12 or 13 sub-grantees we have, and looked where those could fit best. And originally, when our sub-grantees received their funds, there's never enough funds. And they looked at where the gaps were, and trying to fit those in, and looked specifically at filling some gaps for the coordinated entry program, which is our receiving area, which prioritizes and establish, and gets folks in the door, and gets them into the services, and looking at three of the providers, backfilling some funds that were necessary, that they needed really in the beginning, but we didn't have funds for. Providing additional funding for the important Shland Regional Justice Center Transitional Housing Program. Doing a pilot hotel motel voucher program for community action. We're now able to use some funds actually for hotel vouchers as another way, given our shortage of housing. And so the proposal is to allocate some funds in a pilot project and see how that works, now that commerce allows us to use the dollars in that manner. There's an administration component... There's a, there's an administration component because, uh, all the grants have to be, uh, written, uh, rewritten and amended and monitored. So there's allowance for administrative, administrative funds, and then the last item was Community Action Council Prevention Program, again, which was underfunded because we only had so much money, uh, to backfill that as well. And so staff, uh, steering committee recommendation and staff recommendation is that you authorize, uh, those funds to be allocated in that manner. Would stand for any questions you have at this time.
No questions, excited for the housing project for Catholic Family, I know we've been working, the city's got some general fund dollars in that project as well. Excited to get this thing to the finish line, it's been a while since we've had a tax credit, uh, program around here, so.
I do have a question, but it has more to do with the additional funds that are going in to the, that the legislature authorized in the letter from Schlan County, I'm not understand, but I don't want to delay this here. I thought all those funds went in for the, and yet their letter leads you to believe that they think there's another fund set up or something, I didn't quite.
And we've had some good discussions with the steering committee and, and the county and both sides about that, and, um, really the, uh, city believes that, uh, those funds really, uh, they're the same, yes, they were done in a new House bill, um, and, and, but we've had good discussions with the county and the steering committee about that, and, and both counties believe, yes, the, uh, our understanding from the counties in our discussions was that, yes, we should continue to have these funds, uh, flow through the steering committee. But they are looking for the inter-local agreement to be tweaked to recognize, uh, the new House bill, uh, that allocated the funds, so, uh, but there's a, a commitment to continue to work through the steering committee in the allocation of these funds.
I would, I would say they got the cart a little ahead of the horse, but I think the cart and the horse are all on the same page now.
Well said. Yeah, because I, I had the same, I saw the same numbers, Mark, and I, they don't add up, and that's, um, as I read it, uh, the new, uh, the additional allocation was a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, two-hundred dollars. Uh, the county's passing along a hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, so where's the other fourteen thousand, two-hundred dollars?
Go on.
That would be allocated through the steering committee, and we haven't actually received the funds yet, they'd be coming in the future, and so, uh, the intent is that we work on updating the inter-local agreement, and then through the steering, typical steering committee process that when the funds are received, because this was an estimate and they were being a little conservative when they did the allocation, it is an estimate.
I would, I would say this, suffice it to say, without the seven-twenty-four, they wouldn't have got their tax credits and we wouldn't be building anything. So this really was the icing on the cake that got us to the finish line.
It absolutely got us there. It was required.
Yeah.
And I thank everybody that's been involved.
As awkward as that might have been and the, it needed to get that way in order to get the project on the ground, so, at the end of the day, even though, um, process might have been a bit odd, I think we're getting to the right result.
And the good thing is we're now working on, uh, going to be working on bylaws starting next week and, and organization for the steering committee, which is, I think, a good thing.
So should we take these separately, both item one and two, or can we do them together?
I believe, uh, you could lump them together.
Okay, so then I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will move for City Council to accept the recommendations and authorize the mayor to, number one, enter into a sub-grant agreement with Catholic Charities Housing Services for a four-year term totaling seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand for the construction of the low-income housing permanent supporting housing facility. And number two, enter into an amended CHG agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce and amended sub-grant agreements as outlined.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Markart to authorize the mayor to enter into a sub-grant agreement with Catholic Charities for a four-year term for seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars for the construction of the low-income housing permanent supportive housing shelter. And, uh, mayor to enter into amended agreements, uh, with sub-grants in the state of Washington as outlined in our packet this evening. Discussion?
Just one comment, I, I was at the meeting when Catholic Charities came in and did the presentation, and I am so excited that this is going to happen because it's going to be so beneficial to the community, and thank you.
Thank you.
Been a long time coming.
Yes, it has.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks Holly, thanks Glenn.
Thank you.
Hey, good. Your kid didn't have a basketball game today, we didn't get you first.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Dave Erickson Parks Recreation Cultural Services Director, uh, this is a project you've probably seen multiple times before and in your agenda packet. You've got all the history and information and I won't recover, recap that for you, but essentially back in twenty sixteen, uh, we received authorization to apply for a state and a federal grant, and both grants came in the top ten and were awarded funding, uh, for a combined total of about nine-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, five-hundred dollars for a Hale Park Phase Two. And here we are, June of twenty eighteen, we finally got the grant contracts from the state, uh, two years later. So, uh, now we're ready to move ahead with the project if council, uh, authorizes the mayor to accept the grants. Uh, the grant agreements are the, the standard state Recreation Conservation Office grant, um, agreements, the, uh, finance committee has looked at it, as well as city attorney. So staff recommends acceptance and, uh, we'd be ready to hopefully have that no-man's land down there at Hale Park cleaned up and operating as a park by the end of twenty twenty.
No person's land.
Yes. And the, uh, the city contribution is coming from the land transfer with the school district and the payment and all that, is that kind of where that money's coming from?
We're actually matching one of the grants against the other grant, so five-hundred thousand is matching against four-fourteen, five-hundred, and then vice versa. And then, uh, we're using, uh, some staff cost as well as a little from the sewer fund to pay for the restroom portion of the project.
Excellent, that's my boy. So we're in staff time and we got her going, get a brand-new park, that's pretty cool.
Brady finance.
Yes, Dave's the king of that.
I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the project funding agreement with the state of Washington for the Hale Park Phase Two project and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Sparza, uh, to approve the project funding agreement with the state of Washington for Hale Park Phase Two and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks David. Mr. Posenjack. Budget amendment. And did we all get a handout with, uh, specifics on the budget amendment, Brad?
Uh, no, I was supposed to have that at your desk.
Well, you will hear in a minute.
I have one of those.
I think for those on Public Works and maybe Councilmember Kula might want to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, Council, Brad Posenjack, Finance Director, I've got, um, a budget amendment to amend the ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven. So the Finance Committee has reviewed several different budget, budget requests in the first six months of twenty eighteen. We have, in the past, we have done one budget amendment in November, but, um, good business practice says that we should be doing this, um, throughout the year, so we want to have a budget amendment, um, in the middle of the year as well as than in November. So we've got a, there's a, Finance Committee has approved about thirty-three different, uh, budget requests in the first six months. These were all things that when we built the twenty-eighteen budget, they weren't anticipated, and so if you've got any questions, probably the, when you look at the Exhibit A, there's seven-point-six million of appropriation increases overall. The main ones are going to be related to, uh, the North Wenatchee Avenue redevelopment, as well as the new City Hall remodel, and so those are going, that makes up over five million of that seven-point-six, so, um, it's not seven million dollars worth of new positions.
That was, that was my question, I talked to Brad this morning, I just, it seemed like, you know, we, the staffing thing and, uh, we've been hiring quite a few folks there, so I wanted to kind of see the whole list here, so, um, but, Brad, Brad, uh, just a final question I didn't ask you this morning. Now, are all of these on here, these are, are projected costs, we haven't, we haven't paid for these things yet, or, or are some of them?
There's a mix, there's a mix. Most of them are projected costs, yeah, most of them are projected costs, um, some of them have been, uh, paid for because they were approved by Finance Committee earlier in the year.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, we, uh, and those of you that are on the Finance Committee, we obviously deals with these pretty regularly, they slowed down since Matt Leonard left. He had an accident for, for wanting to improve the police station fourteen different times, and I think we're finally done with the air conditioning and the heating there. And we've done some other sort of smaller things along the route, obviously, the four million dollars is, uh, temporary placeholder for purchasing Wash Dot's property, which you're aware of in terms of the redevelopment of that. Uh, new City Hall stuff, uh, we went over our budget on what we paid for, and there's a little bit of money for starting the engineering and that sort of work which you're aware of. Most of the rest of the stuff is, although not small in nature, um, things that we've talked about and just trying to get, we're really trying to get projects to the finish line, and so we've got some on-call engineering, and we're getting the NEPA process started and that, you know, of course, um, so we've got sort of a lot going on. I think we're doing a pretty good job of trying to monitor our general fund balance, and, um, quite frankly, I think we're in pretty good shape, so, um, you know, some of these have revenue sources attached to them as well, but, um, I think overall, um, we're in obviously pretty good shape and, um, I, so I, 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 again, all approved by the Finance Department or Committee, excuse me. And Brad and I did take a, a first look at the twenty-nineteen, excuse me, uh, budget.
Yeah.
With on big picture numbers, and we're, I think, based on some conservative estimates, we're in pretty decent shape, so I feel like we're, um, kind of cranking along.
Yep, and most everything on, on the list of budget adjustments are one-time items, they're not going to be ongoing costs. We're not adding to our operations, they're all, they're all one, most of them, I think probably ninety-nine percent of that is one, one-time.
Are we, uh, I guess funding these out of, you know, revenues that are coming in from increased sales tax and those kind of things, are we having to go into reserves?
The, I believe that this will, pretty much all of the general fund expenses are going to be able to, they'll be covered with the one-time sales tax revenues that we're getting, and, um, I don't, I don't see that we're going to be, dipping into our reserves this year, even though our budget is built, that we would be, we'd be reducing our reserves, but I think when twenty eighteen actually plays out, we'll end up growing our fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of the stuff, you know, we put projects in for twenty eighteen that aren't going to get done, right, and then you sort of replaced them with this, and so it's sort of kind of this ongoing, and we've kept a nice, nice cushion in there, and, um, I, I really feel like we're sort of fine, uh, doing some of these sorts of projects, and, um, you know, we, we are pushing pretty hard, as you've heard at Public Works Committee, about trying to get some of these projects done. And, um, we, we just need to get some out the door, and I've said no more brilliant ideas, I'm tired of them because then we got to pay for them and try to figure out a form, so. I've told my staff, no more brilliant ideas, and let's just get these ones done, so. And we need to, and quite frankly, the auditors would like us to amend budgets a little bit more often than once a year, especially, um, so it's sort of, we may be doing this on a biannual basis. So this does require a majority of the council plus one, so we'll need five yes votes. Any questions for Brad, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Well, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash twenty, amending the two thousand eighteen budget as adopted by ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for, entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city and requiring that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council. Second.
A motion by Councilmember Bailey, and a second by Councilmember Markart to adopt the twenty eighteen dash twenty, amending the twenty eighteen budget and, uh, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all of a portion of our appropriations provided thereto, uh, requiring a majority of the council plus one. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for the record, seven yes votes. Rob, comp plan.
Good evening, Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director, uh, we're seeking, uh, council approvals to allow the mayor to sign a, a dendum to our, um, water comp plan. There was approximately six tasks that were, um, once RH two got into them, realized they needed a few more hours of analysis. So, original budget was a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, this, uh, between the two, these, these two supplements totaled about thirteen, so it would, um, bring the total contract up to a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. We're really near the finish line on this comp plan, we, uh, have the consultants promised to have this submitted to DOH by the end of September, and we hope to bring rates back to you, um, late August, early September, so, any questions?
And, uh, Finance Committee dealt with this as well today.
Yes.
They do, you mentioned earlier, during the Finance Committee, they documented everything, um, the increase, I just want to make, point that out, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, it's all in the, it's in your, should be in your packet there, all the tasks are documented, what they.
So I'd entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to execute supplement number one with RH two Engineering Incorporated for Design Services for the Comprehensive Water System Plan. Update project number seventeen oh one, providing additional design.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold to authorize the mayor's signature on supplement one with RH two Engineering for Design Services for the Water System Comp Plan Update. Discussion?
Yeah, uh, right on the, uh, budget allocation and the supplement in there in the little box there, uh, shows our, our city water, assuming that's coming out of our water fund, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so we, we show a seventy-thousand, five-hundred and change increase there, and then regional water shows a decrease, uh, so, reason for that, if we're, if we're sharing, where, where's our, goes up and where's going down?
The, um, the intent there was to show that when the original proposal from RH two came in for the regional, it was under budget, there was a seventy-five-thousand-dollar budget allowed on regional. And so, um, the overall project was one-seventy-five, and so, um, and so there is an increase on the regional part, volume two here, as, I think that's, uh, that's, uh, five-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-four dollars, the ask on volume one for the city proper portion of, uh, volume one is twelve-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-six dollars. So, um, that decrease was to show that the original was, was less than the seventy-five thousand. So it's not going to be, it is confusing, but it's not giving a credit back to regional.
Okay. And then, uh, the other thing was, uh, a couple pages over from that, there's the, uh, the different tasks that they're performing and so forth, there was a interesting, this is, this is a curiosity question, I guess, quickly, but, uh, said that they had, between two thousand five and two thousand ten, ten showed a, uh, customer water consumption dropped by thirty percent, was there, anybody ever come up with a reason why, that's, that's a pretty significant.
Yeah, um, I, I have heard, not, not, we haven't found the silver bullet on that, um, a lot, uh, what I've heard is it's primarily been to just consumption reduction by the customers.
This is, yeah, conserve water, conserve water, because we don't have any, but we have lots, so.
Yeah. Get, get, get the irrigation lines up, you know, at the parks and things like that, okay. And then finally, there was, uh, a comment in there about our water rights, there being some dispute with ecology or whatever on we, we disagree or they disagree with us on who gets or wants or owns or whatever, is, is there been any resolution to that?
Uh, not that I've, not that I'm aware of, I have read part of the report from RH two on that, um, I think it was, it was STEMS, uh, up to, at, up at regional. But I, I don't know anymore, I can get back to you on that.
Okay, if you would, yeah, I mean, because I know what, three or four years ago, we bought some more water rights and, you know, so there's, but if, if we're in, it's contested, that makes me a little concerned, I guess.
Yeah.
It's more of a paperwork issue than, uh, it's, uh, had to do when the regional was formed, the East Wenatchee.
Okay.
Basically, ecology lost the paperwork.
That would never happen.
Oh, she's, come on, what a surprise.
When, when we bring back the final comp plan, I'll, I'll ask RH two to have a little, we'll have a little something about that issue.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Mr. King, we're going to extend the parking lot some more. Mr. Widener.
Evening, Mayor and Council, Steve King, Economic Development Director, um, yes, exactly, we're asking.
We're asking for an amendment to the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Widener Apartment Homes. This would be the Second Amendment, which is a 90-day extension. The reason why we had the First Amendment is they did environmental review, and they did that, performed it, and came back with nothing substantial, so that's good news. So now our next step would be to work on the public-private partnership.
And they had to change engineers at some point, too. So we're, haven't quite got to the point where we can sit down and try to negotiate a deal. I would hope in the next two to three weeks, we can at least try, and then see if we get something that's acceptable to the council. So we need to get this back on Widener's plate near the top, so.
But everything's going good?
Yeah, it's just going to be a business deal, right? So they're, we just got to figure out if we can get one. So I'd entertain--
My question would be, is there, is there a reason to continue delaying this because we want them for sure, or should we open it up for any other developer who would be willing to look at it?
I would say we need to get this to the finish line with Widener one way or the other. If it doesn't work with him, we'll know in the next 30 to 45 days. And if it doesn't work, we'll let it lapse, and we'll open it up to another housing developer. Do we get all of his paperwork? Is that one of the deals? Yeah. Okay. Well, the environmental, we'll pay for, and then, yeah, we would get some drawings and stuff. But it's not going to be far enough along where it's really going to be beneficial to anybody, because he's not designing the project until he gets a deal. He's doing preliminary engineering and cost analysis and that sort of stuff. Did we pay for all the environmental?
Half.
Okay, so no matter what, we would have done it. So he's saving us money no matter what. So we get, we get the property back, and we got the Phase One and the Phase Two done, so we're still good to go. What we do is go chase another apartment developer. And we can hand that report over to them. Yeah, because there's nothing better than trying to get 178 housing units on that piece of property. We showed the governor's office today, Mr. Bonelander and Drew Shirk, and they were like, you have to figure out how to make that happen. And I said, I know, it's, give us some money.
Write a check.
Yeah. So I guess I'd entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign a Second Amendment to the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Widener Apartment Homes for the Mission and Kitah House parking lot, extending the due diligence period an additional 90 days. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Sparza, to authorize the mayor to sign the Second Amendment for the purchase and sale agreement with Widener Apartment Homes for an additional 90 days of due diligence. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report. I don't have much to report. Two items. At the Transportation Council meeting today, as I mentioned to you last time we met, when we approved the Springwater project, that I thought I could find us some money, and we got $50,000 of Transportation Council money to help pay for the cost overruns at Springwater, and we got $75,000 to help cover the cost overruns for our State Route 28 or 285 sidewalk project that we pulled. And we're going to go to, but, so we got some, there was some extra funding laying around, and I took some money from Goodwin Bridge, and then we gave them some other money that they could, whatever. So we got a little bit of money to help with those two projects, so hopefully that gets us to the finish line on those. For next week, we had one item on the agenda for our, what do we call that meeting now? Work session. And it was regarding the, how many people have used the sewer abatement, not abatement program, but the discounted billing. You know, we raised the rates, but we increased the, we've got 20 people in the program, and a lot of them are trying to get their water bill paid for it. And so it really was nothing that requires us to sit down and have a work session. So at this point, we don't plan on having a work session. We're not meeting on the 26th. We won't meet on the 2nd, so we'll meet again on August 9th, where we'll be dealing with this, with the districting stuff. Allison, anything else from you?
We still have council committee meetings. So next Thursday, we have public safety, and then on the 24th, we'll have Public Works Economic Development again, so.
Anything on council stuff that you're working on that?
I think we may have found the source of our, our crackling and feedback, and it's those microphones up there.
Think so?
Because they also cut out on staff when they were talking.
Yeah, it did cut out.
So if we could have electronics, take a look at those, see if there's a short or something in there.
Yeah.
They were kind of breaking it out.
And then we think it's coming from the phone, but I'm pretty sure it's that, because they were, I'm still okay hearing-wise, and they were cutting out.
And for the council, and I think I told you this, in case I haven't, but we are temporarily planning on moving City Hall to the third floor of the federal building near the end of November, is sort of the plan from staff at this point. We don't have a signed lease with Social Security yet, but it's close. Staff is working on planning for getting this up to the third floor and doing a little bit of remodeling. We got to get the dark fiber across the street, but basically, the plans are in for us to do that. I think we're moving council chambers to the second-floor meeting room, which will be fine temporarily, so we are sort of, kind of moving in that direction.
Yep.
All right, anything from the council, or anything they're doing?